I didn't say send die. Oh yeah, I did. A meeting of the Village Board. Village of Vernon Hills, 290 Evergreen Drive, Vernon Hills, Illinois. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustees Cook.
Here.
Forrester.
Here.
Schultz.
What?
What'd you say?
What was that?
That's Craig.
Oh, okay.
Here.
Yeah. Okay, that's a be, you can be quiet for a while.
Marport.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Takaoka.
Here.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. We have a quorum. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? As best you can. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, before the Board meeting begins, we need a motion from the Board to allow Trustee Takaoka to participate in this Board meeting electronically. He is out of town on business.
So made. Motion.
So made.
The second motion is second. Do we have to have a voice vote on this?
You should have a roll call vote.
Okay. All right, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Yeah, motion carries. Okay. Proclamation. Well, any citizens that wish to address the Board on anything tonight other than what will be on committee at whole, because if you're here for committee at whole, you'll get, you'll be called. So. Anybody got new business? Okay. Well, with that said, it's proclamation time. And this one is in appreciation of dedicated service to the Village of Vernon Hills. James Edward Schultz, Vernon Hills Trustee, Vernon Hills, Illinois, Lake County, Illinois. Jim Schultz was elected sworn in as a Village Trustee on May 3rd, 2005, and subsequently elected to three additional four-year terms, serving until April 30th, 2001, 21. Jim was born and raised in Chicago, Illinois. Graduated from Lane Tech High School, followed by service in the United States Army from 1971 to 1977 as a first cook and recruitment color guard commander, earning the rank of Specialist Six, receiving an honorable discharge and early, later earning his Bachelor of Arts from Northeastern Illinois University. Jim moved to Vernon Hills in 1989 and is the original owner of a home in Hawthorne Club that he has shared with wife Karen and their two children, Jonathan and Jennifer, and later in which he welcomed his three grandchildren, Madison, Giulietta, and Emmett. For over 38 years, Jim was employed at W.W. Granger, working in distribution operations, packaging engineering, and in the development coordination of integrated material handling systems adjunct to new facility construction. Jim's community involvement includes serving as Secretary of Vernon Hills Traffic Advisory Committee, let's see, Citizens Representing, Representative for the Town Center Tiff Committee, Secretary of the Falcons Hockey Organization, and is a proud member of the AMVETS, the American Legion, and St. Mary of Vernon Parish. Who's playing? Who's, who's? Oh, the judge. Oh, okay. It's okay, Judge. It's all right, Judge, anything you want to do.
You can do that.
I thought I was being called.
Anything you want.
May I be heard?
What's that?
Yes, may I be heard a second?
Yeah.
First, it's an honor to be here.
Yeah.
As a resident of Vernon Hills since 1989, I trust Schultz. Before I walked in, the Village Manager is my witness, had turned off my phone. I had a rule in my court, anytime somebody's cell phone went off, I'd deputy, maybe confiscate.
All right, Judge, well, thank you for the courtesy.
I don't want to share my thoughts.
Okay, I gotta finish trustee Schultz's proclamation. I've hit AMVETS, the American Legion, and St. Mary of Vernon Parish, being members of all those organizations. Oh yeah. Jim's service as a trustee included significant achievements, including indoor workplace clean air ordinance, development and implementation of senior staff compensation process, facilitating the appointment of Klein Thorpe Jenkins as Village Council, acquisition of the YMCA facility, and its continued use for the community, and improved intergovernmental relationships with Hawthorne District 73 and the Vernon Hills Park District. Jim takes great pride in the development issue from, from the Cooneyo Trust properties, which include the shops of Graves Landing and Melody Farm, and the development of Hawthorne Hills Square Marketplace. Whatever redevelopment, yeah, right. Okay, and Hawthorne Mall renovations of municipal facilities, the continued strength and solvency of the police pension fund, the continued fiscal stability and health of the village, and the future of the Village of Vernon Hills. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Roger L. Byrne, President of the Village Board of Trustees, who hereby express our sincerest appreciation of Jim Schultz for his years of dedicated service to residents and employees of the Village of Vernon Hills, and wish him and his family well until we meet again dated this 4th day of May 2021. Do you want to say anything, trustee?
It's been an interesting run. 16 years has kind of gone by really quickly. My granddaughter, who will turn 17, can adjust to, time does march on quickly. I've enjoyed the work. I will miss the work. But I'm looking forward to a less scheduled life where I don't need to be on certain places, on certain days, at certain times, on a continuing basis. But with that being said, like I said, I will miss the work. I've enjoyed working with all the team. From the boys over in Public Works to the finance folks, both past and present, to the Police Department, which I have the utmost respect for. It's probably, in my opinion, probably the most premier force in Lake County. I don't see anyone being surpassing us. Our communications team, Mike and Kristen and John, have done an outstanding job promoting Vernon Hills. Our building department and our newly kind of created Community Development Director and his team have done a marvelous job of bringing in some outstanding new developments. And so, any credit I get really needs to be distributed amongst them, including our legal team from Klein Thorpe. I wish Jim was here tonight. He's, he's served us well and hopefully he'll continue to serve us well as you have, Carmen. And of course, my brethren, Nancy, Mike, Craig on the phone, Tom, Dave, and his lordship. It, it, it is a team effort and this is one hell of a team that I've been privileged to be part of. It took 11 years for me not to be the junior trustee. I guess I'll never make it to the senior trustee. But that's quite all right. I've had a nice run and I appreciate everything that the Village has done for me and my family. And with that, I've turned in my fob. So there is, and you've had my broken computer a long time. So with that being said, all I have to say is thank you and, and I appreciate it and goodbye.
Now you can officially apply for dual citizenship. I'm referencing Wisconsin.
Mr. Mayor, if you could, if we could ask for indulgence just for a minute. Myself and Deputy Chief Levicki have brought to you a plaque, which is our department crest, our department seal, signed by the men and women of the Police Department, Communications, Patrol, Investigation, Supervisory Staff. Jim, it's, it's really been our pleasure to work with you, to earn your trust and support over the years. And I, we think you've set a wonderful example of the partnership that a team like ours needs with elected officials to have community trust. So thank you for all of your support and hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. I've done you.
If you can indulge me too.
Even spell the name right.
Very good. Jim, a little present from Public Works. Jim, when we first met many years ago, I remember you sharing that you have very strong opinions. You are a man of your word. And we just are so grateful. Just looking at all the trustees and the board members I've worked with over 28 years. You're one of the premier. The details that you've shared, the help with development, support of our department. Our department wanted to share that with you. And there are some certain things on there that are reflective of you specifically. Your, your time with the American Legion and all the support with the American Legion. And the Jim E. Schultz Golf Tour. I think that's something new that you're about to start. And then certainly on the other side, it's Schultz's way.
Always.
I really appreciate you helping out. We didn't take a picture today. This one too?
Yeah. Might as well give both sides. It's a good street sign. I have it both sides. Thank you. Thank you one and all.
Absolutely. Okay. It's time to swear in, isn't it? We don't have, we're not. Yeah, so. Oh, okay. Motion to adjourn, okay.
Yeah, we need a motion from trustee Schultz.
So as my final, final act, I would like to make a motion for adjournment, sine ADA, for the purpose of seating the new Board.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Forrester.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you and good night.
Okay, take care. I'll see you later, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't, I don't know. Okay.
What's that? I'll move on now.
That's right. You're closer now.
Mazel, come on up over here to the front.
It's gonna be me?
It's gonna be you first, sir. You're the big guy.
Yeah.
And to do the honors, just in case there wasn't an introduction, is retired federal court judge Sam Derryagan, also a Vernon Hills resident.
Mr. President, please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand.
Yeah.
And you will be free to after me.
Yes.
I.
Aye.
Roger L. Byrne.
Roger L. Byrne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Just discharge the duties.
Of the office of Village President.
Of the office of Village President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Judge, thank you very much. Everybody get a picture of these guys? Did you get a picture? What are you doing? Okay. Well, you want to stay here? This is a good camera, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can stay right here. You have a tree?
All right, yeah. Thanks for the answer.
And just for the record, we're gonna be swearing in the next three trustees. And trustee Takaoka, who is not able to be here today, was sworn in on Friday morning. So he is official.
Will the trustees raise your right hands? And I will say, aye, say aye. And then your names, please. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully. Discharge the duties. Of the office of Village Trustee. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Awesome.
Sir?
Don't forget the phone.
No, somebody's got a phone.
No, no, to return the phone. Make sure the judge gets his phone back. Make sure the judge gets his phone back.
They need to sign them first.
Judge, you want to go?
Yeah. The Village Manager has asked to be, has promised to get his cell phone.
Did, did you get the cell phone back?
Just make sure you get your phone back.
Yeah, that, where, where did he go?
It's okay, you can return his cell phone.
The Police Department does it now.
Yeah.
His phone, for him, has been suspended for three days.
Yeah. Yeah, it's okay, chief, give him his phone back.
All right, Judge, thank you very much.
Now, is it a motion to reconvene or is it a new, just called order? New meeting, just new called order.
Okay.
Called the order then?
That's why the sine ADA means without a day.
You want to just go to the club?
No, we gotta do that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. With that said, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Village Board to order. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustees Cook.
Here.
Forrester.
Here.
Shank. Marport.
All right, so the son one is back.
Did you call on trustee Takaoka yet? What'd you say? Did you, did you get a here out of him?
Here.
Okay, he's here.
He's here.
Okay, is it?
Not yet.
That's it?
No, not me.
Okay. We have a quorum.
Here.
Okay.
Okay. We have a quorum present. What do we have to stand, do the pledge again?
You'll need another motion for trustee Takaoka because it's a new meeting.
Is there a motion for trustee Taki, Takaoka to be here remotely?
I'm not sure.
Hey, that's a motion. We got a motion and that's sure.
I'll second that, sure.
Yeah, apparently he's got a second of the not sure. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Shank.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we got a. Yeah, okay. All right, goodbye, my family. Bye. Okay. With that said, birthday wishes. While there are any citizens that want to address the Board. Citizens, a lot of them have left. Okay, birthday wishes to Centarians. First, we have Diane Zemel, or Zemo. Diane D. Zemel is a resident at Brookdale Senior Living Vernon Hills. She was born in Chicago on April 28th, 1921, and raised in Beaver Dam, Wisconsin. Dee has four children, six grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. And an interesting note about Dee is Dee worked for a family member who owned an air conditioning company, excuse me, in Chicago. When World War II started, the company transitioned to making airplane parts and Dee became part of the home front water effort. Water, Jesus. Better put my glasses back on. Became part of the home front war effort. In recognition of Dee having turned 100, staff visited Dee, giving her a cake and a copy of this proclamation, welcoming her to the Vernon Hills Centarian Club. Happy birthday, Dee.
Happy birthday.
Okay. Next is Anita Kaplan Cutler. Anita Kaplan Cutler is a resident of Brookdale Senior Living Vernon Hills. Anita was born on May 4th, 1921, and raised in New York City. Anita has two daughters, two sons-in-law, and two grandchildren. An interesting note about Anita, Anita raised more than a million dollars in the 1980s for the University of Miami, Sylvester Comprehensive Cancer Center while she was serving as its president. Yeah, that's cool. Anita is a long-life creative writer and ran her own poetry company. Happy birthday, Anita, and welcome to the Vernon Hills Centarian Club. Okay, Anita, congratulations. Okay. Okay, now we have, this is an important week to say the least, National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day. The Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. The members of the law enforcement agency of Vernon Hills play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Vernon Hills. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And the members of our Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women of the Vernon Hills Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Roger L. Byrne, President of the Village of Vernon Hills, call upon all citizens of Vernon Hills and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2021 as Police Week. With appropriate ceremonies and observations in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the right and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Vernon Hills to observe Saturday, May 15th, 2021 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness, therefore, I have here unto, set my hand to cause the seal of the Village of Vernon Hills to be affixed dated the 4th day of May, 2021. Yes, trustee Schultz.
No, he's gone.
Oh, trustee, is it you?
Yeah, well, yeah, because we're seat over on the lights.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're seat over on the lights, sorry. No, I just wanted to say, I, I, earlier today, we had a fire demonstration, the sprinkler unit at, at school at Hawthorne South. And I said this about the firefighters and, and I have to say this about police too. They're amazing people. When most of us encounter trouble, we run away. When the fire alarm goes off, we leave the building. When there are shots fired, we run away. When there's an accident, we try to get away from it as quickly as we can. But firefighters and police are the kind of people who go toward the danger and go toward the trouble to make the rest of us safe. So again, it, you guys can never be honored enough. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This, especially in these times. In any event, next is Proclamation National Public Works Week, May 16th to the 22nd. Stronger Together. Public Works helps maintain a community. Public Works helps maintain a community strength by working together to provide an infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment. Public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management, fire, fire first response, uh, solid waste and right-of-way management. Public Works provides togetherness needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life services. Uh, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. The support of an outstanding, informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of the public work system and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal. Uh, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. The efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Roger Byrne, President of Village of Vernon Hills, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through May 22nd, uh, 2021 as National Public Works Week in the Village of Vernon Hills. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the problems involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Given under my hand and the seal of the Village of Vernon Hills this 4th day of May, 2021. And the footprint's under, Dave, the seal. Yeah, it's, it's a work boot that says VHPW. All right, you want to say anything, Dave?
I, I just wanted to, you know, recognize the police department also that their week precedes ours, is not by chance. It's, uh, really demonstrating and reflective of how well our departments work together. I, I appreciate the consideration and the proclamation. The COVID year was very interesting, and I think it really showed how important Public Works is. We were there when the snow was falling, potholes, et cetera. When people, uh, take their shower, and, uh, the water has to be treated, and the water has to be turned on, we're here there for them. So, just want to thank you.
What's, what's our water pressure at the hydrants?
It drops down. Yeah, it, it depends which part of town, but it's usually in the 45 to 50 range, PSI.
PSI, yeah, okay. And how many gallons a minute?
You stumped me on that one, Roger.
Okay, that, that wasn't a trick question.
I'll figure that one out.
I'll save that one for the fire.
I'll look that one up.
I think it's 250 gallons a minute out of a regular fire hose. I think that's what Fireman Tony said today when we were at.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, I think that's what he said.
Okay, well, that's good.
But I'm not 100% certain. Dave, just say it's a lot of water.
Yeah.
Well, I know it was 250 gallons, because he said if that sprayed in your house after a fire, it makes it into a disaster, so.
Yeah. Look, you gotta get the weep holes going. Okay, uh, just to, recommend, am I doing this tonight, Mike? Kevin, hello, Mike, Mark, I mean, Mark. Am I doing this tonight, or is it the next meeting with Kevin?
I believe you're announcing it tonight, uh, because it's going to probably be official.
Yeah, we're asking you to make your nomination and, uh, your recommendation to the board. And if they approve, we'd look, we'd seek a motion to approve and a second, and obviously a vote tonight to approve his appointment, make it official.
Okay.
Obviously, he was not able to be here tonight.
Right.
As he's in his own town, he has a board meeting similar to ours where they're, uh, swearing in the new board members, and, and, and he does that. So, he couldn't be here tonight, but he will be present at the May 18th board meeting.
Okay. Well, for, for, uh, with that, I certainly, uh, recommend as village president, Kevin Timoney, to be our next village manager. Okay, so we might need a motion?
We need a motion and a second.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee's Cook.
Aye.
Forrester. Aye.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So he, and he'll start sometime in July, right?
His first date will be July 6th. Uh, he has a 60-day out clause on his contract to notify his community.
That's okay, so that means he'll be here.
So staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, trustee Appenheim? Did you, you or?
I had a question first.
Our office A. Manager Flushhour will work on, uh, the new manager's contract, which will come to the board, I believe, at the next meeting?
Correct, the, uh, the contract should, or the work agreement has basically been completed. Uh, we'll, I'll forward that to the board for your, uh, input and approval beforehand. If all are in agreement, then it'll be on the May 18th agenda for formal approval, and he will be here as well.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to, uh, I wanted to thank the HR.gov, is that their?
GovHR.
GovHR organization, HR.govHR organization for, uh, bringing us a multitude of fine candidates, um, and, um, I don't remember the, the full number that they originally, the number of candidates, 76?
76 total candidates.
76 applications, and they whittled it down to around 20?
About 15, and then staff worked with members from the board to whittle that number down to, to five. And then those five were interviewed by all, uh, through a series of three interviews, um, by staff members, board trustees, um, some of the police department personnel. And then the final three candidates were brought before the full board for another interview process. So it was, it was a very rigorous process. A lot of work went into this, and a lot of input from a lot of different people. So, and we thank the board, we as the staff, thank the board for allowing us to be part of this process. As, uh, the board has noted, uh, it's integral to the success of the organization that the manager and the staff members, department heads have a great working relationship. And we sincerely appreciate that. Moving forward, we have no doubt that this will work just fine.
I was just getting out that it's a testament to what a fine community this is, based on the number of quality applicants that we had to, who really want to work here.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank trustee Cook and trustee, I don't know what I call them, uh,
Former trustee.
Uh, Chris Schultz for participating in, in the interview process before it even came to the rest of the board and myself. And they always liked this guy. Right, trustee Cook?
Yes, and it was, it was more, it was more, um, um, the input from staff was greatly appreciated, because, um, we have such a great staff here that we wanted somebody that could just continue the great leadership that our current village manager has been giving. And, and, uh, I think everybody, it, it was very well focused and, and very well thought out, and I think we got the right person.
And in comparison to, uh, village manager or chief Flushhour, we've now hired a youth.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
I mean, just, you know, which is good. Okay, enough on that. What, uh, what else did we get here? Oh, manager's declaration 2109 to.
Right, it's just, just a reminder that, uh, President Byrne will be signing declaration number 21-09, um, under his emergency authority. And this goes hand in hand with the governor's emergency declaration from March of 2020, and will continue in effect until the next board meeting, or until the governor, uh, declares the state of emergency to be ended.
Okay. We don't have to vote on that, right? No. It's been voted on a long time ago, okay. Uh, next is, uh, annual audit fiscal year 19 and 20, 19 and 20.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have Dan Berg from Sickich, who will give, uh, the board the report on the FY 1920 audit.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, mostly, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
You might state your name for it.
I'm Dan Berg, I'm a partner with Sickich LLP, uh, the auditor for the past several years for the village.
Yeah.
Uh, presenting the latest audit that was issued at the end of January. Um, happy to get this one out the door as soon as humanly, uh, possible, as we worked with staff, uh, through a variety of issues during the course of the audit. We were able to give the, uh, city the best opinion we're allowed to give, commonly referred to as a clean opinion, we call it an unmodified opinion. Uh, so congratulations once again. The general fund, uh, exceeded its threshold that, uh, set forth by village policy of having about eight months of expenditures in the fund balance, has a little over 10, about 10 and a third months. And, uh, uh, also, in conjunction with this comprehensive annual financial report, uh, we have issued the TIF reports and the board communication, which details any suggestions we have for improvements or any findings, as well as the journal entries, and notification to the board if we had any issues uh, encountered during the course of the audit, which we didn't have any. It is a comprehensive annual financial report, so that means that it has, in addition to what is required by generally accepted accounting principles and by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, an introductory section and a statistical section. Goes above and beyond what is required by any of those institutions or by the state. So it demonstrates to the community that the village's commitment to full disclosure and additional information that's valuable to the bondholders and any investors in the city or the village, uh, and enables them to get a better, clearer view of your finances, where you've been, perhaps where you're going. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to review this document, strongly recommend you start with the transmittal letter before our opinion and the management discussion and analysis that appears immediately after our opinion. The MDNA, um, compares last year to this year, and then allows staff to explain why things change from one year to the other. It also gives a nice, uh, synopsis of the village's reaction to the COVID situation. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the process, the work product you have before you, or anything else on your mind with the, uh, with the annual audit.
Well, staff, you all worked, what, closely with them on this?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Yeah, okay. Was there any comments any of you get, you people want to make, staff?
No, I would just, uh, address some of, uh, as also in front of you is the management, uh, comments that, that was, that were issued by Sickich. Um, I am happy to report that we have addressed these in some of the reorganization that, that we did last fall, um, in terms of some of these things like the journal entry, uh, journal entry review and approval is now going through the finance director, instead of the finance director doing both. So we have addressed the comments that, that Sickich had in the last year. So these will not appear in the, the management comments next year.
So you're talking about golf course deficit, fund balance?
Golf course deficit, what? We will potentially need to talk about it at a future board meeting. That would require a change to, uh, the golf course being a special revenue fund, as well as making a transfer from the general fund to clear up the deficit fund balance. Um, and that is something that we are looking at and reviewing, and will more than likely bring that recommendation to the board at a future meeting.
Okay, so all the deficiencies obviously start on page 26?
Yep, page 26.
Okay.
Uh, 23, actually.
Okay.
Five, yeah.
All right. Okay. Any comments or questions from the board members? So we're, this won't hurt our AAA bond rating?
No, sir.
That's good.
As an auditor, I'm more of a pass/fail guy, as opposed to, uh, a greater. We'll leave that to Moody's and Standard and Force.
Yeah. What, what are the bond rates at now for like, you know, for AAA rated in the village?
You mean the interest rates?
Yeah.
It's well below three still. Uh, they've been creeping up slightly lately.
Yeah, they've been, they were very, they changed very rapidly during COVID. Um, they were jumping at times even a, even a full 100 basis points in a day, which was pretty crazy for a bond market. Um, but I, I, what I've seen, and what I've seen issued recently is between 2 and 3% on a AAA rated, uh, 30-year note. Um, but it really just comes down to how many buyers you have in the market that day. Um, you can see AAA's go below 2, and you can see AAA's go above 3. It really just depends on, um, when you sell.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, you know.
Thank you. As always, uh, I always like to remind my boards that I work with staff, but I work for the board. So if any issues come up or questions that you think of later, feel free to reach out and contact us. We'd be happy to take your call or email.
Where's your main corporate office at?
We've been working from home for so long, um.
I mean, but where's, are you guys from Illinois?
Oh, absolutely. We have, uh, our headquarters are in Naperville. We house, on a, pre-COVID, over 300 employees there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We have offices throughout the Midwest and on both coasts now too.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. All right. Next is the Amnibus Vote Agenda. Is there a motion to prove, prove items A through L?
L.
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 L?
L.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second, any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee's Marport.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Shank.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Unfinished business. Uh, approval and passage of resolution, uh, 2021-012, resolution?
That's new business, come here.
Oh, okay.
That's new business.
All right, well, we have unfinished additional business?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go to the number, okay. A new business communication. Approval and passage of resolution 2021-012, resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event for Hawthorne Mall located at 122 Hawthorne Center. And who's here from Hawthorne? Hi.
Hello, Andrew Casillas, I'm founder and director of North Suburbs Cars and Coffee.
What, what's your name?
Andrew Casillas.
Okay.
Nothing's changed from when we talked about this in?
No, it's a little bit different location to stay out of the construction area.
Okay.
Other than that, it's pretty much the, the same thing. A little different concept too, it's coffee and cars, so they can stop in, um, uh, the pastry shop by the, uh, movie theater and get coffee and pastries and walk around and enjoy the, the car show.
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee's Marport.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Shank.
Aye.
Motion carries. Take care. Yep. Trustee Cook?
Um, yeah, I just, it, it, interesting enough that District 73 is here tonight. I just wanted to, under communications, um, it, it's important that the school's involved in the community, and, and it is in lots and lots of ways, and I just wanted to point out one, uh, really nice example that's happening this week. The, um, District 73 HEA, which is the Hawthorne Education Association, um, the teachers' union, are going to be donating $500 to the Elementary North Food Pantry, and another $500 to the Libertyville Township Food Pantry, um, for, because they service a lot of the community. And it's funny, a lot of people forget that, um, everything in Vernon Hills north of Route 60 is in Libertyville Township. The, the old township system kind of confuses people a little bit. But, um, um, yeah, they're donating this $1,000 to two food pantries and stuff like that. So it's, it's an excellent example of how the schools are involved in the community in so many different ways. So I just wanted to compliment them on that.
Okay. Any other new business or communication coming before the board? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
What?
I think that was an "I."
Is that an "I"?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries.
Aye.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
This is like, yeah. All right, well, all right, well, okay. The village board needs adjourned. I like to call the committee to hold order. The first item is approval of the committee to hold meeting minutes of April twentieth nineteen, twenty twenty-one. I always said nineteen, wasn't, weren't the people, yeah, I always said nineteen twenty-one because it is centarians, centenarians.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, okay. Motion is second. Any comments, questions, or deletions? Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is Hawthorne Elementary School South, four-three-zero, North Aspen Drive. Mike Atkinson's got this. This is to do, this is to spend the referendum money, right?
Yes, it is, Your Honor. I can give you a, if I may, I can give you a brief summary of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to the board regarding the additions that are proposed to the Hawthorne Elementary South School, and then I can throw it to the petitioner who can review the plans with you. The project represents the third phase of a facilities master plan that includes additions or renovations to seven existing buildings within the school district. For Hawthorne Elementary South, the proposed work would include a gymnasium off the north side of the building, and then a one-story atrium addition off of the east side of the building. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on April fourteenth to consider this matter. And regarding the site plan and the request to revise the special use permit, the commission was supportive of the request and had no comments. Regarding landscaping, commission members commented that additional landscaping should be provided on the front east side of the building. The motion ultimately didn't approve. There was three in favor, three against. In response to this, staff is recommending that a condition of approval be included that would require the school district to work with the village's landscape technician to look for locations and opportunities to plant some landscaping in front of the building. And that condition has been included as number seven in the report attached to your packet. Regarding the architectural design, the commission members voiced concern regarding the design of the acid-etched precast panels on the upper portion of the gymnasium walls. They felt that the brick finish, which was proposed on the first floor, should carry forward to the upper levels of the gymnasium. The petitioner has responded by adding brick to that upper portion, and the color renderings that are attached to your packet reflect that change. So to summarize the motions, the commission voted with five in favor and one against to recommend approval of an amendment to ordinance two thousand three dash oh-four-zero as amended, authorizing revisions to a special use permit for a planned unit development allowing two additions to the existing building. Second, the commission voted with five in favor and one against to recommend approval of preliminary and final site plan. Third, the commission voted with three in favor and three against to recommend approval of preliminary and final landscape plan. Again, this motion did not pass. However, we've added that condition into the report and are recommending that as part of the approval for this project. And finally, the commission voted with five in favor and one against to recommend approval, excuse me, preliminary and final approval of the architectural elevation. So again, I'll pass it off to Hawthorne Seventy-three, who can present the plans to you tonight. When they're done, and if the COW determines that the project is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance approving the development in accordance with the plans and the conditions of approval that are attached to your packet. And with that, I'll throw that to Hawthorne Seventy-three to present their plans.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mike did a great job, gave a great overview. As he mentioned, we are doing-
Your name, please.
Pardon?
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ted Haug with Leggett Architects. Ted Haug with Leggett Architects?
Yeah.
As Mike mentioned, we are doing approximately a twenty thousand square foot addition to the existing elementary school south on Aspen Drive. Can you go to the next slides? Or do I do it?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the existing area. I think you're all familiar with it. Bus drop-off is on the west side of the building, with parent drop-off and staff parking on the east side of the building, with a hard play area to the north of the building. One thing to note is, as you know, the early learning, or the early learner's school was completed last year, and therefore the younger playground area is no longer needed in that hard play area. So that's where we propose to put the addition. And you can see here, we're expanding into that hard play area so not to disrupt circulation around the building. Mike talked about what the addition consists of. It's, oh, I'm sorry, this is the landscaping plan. We show landscaping around the addition proper to the west side of the new addition and at the new entry area north of the building where that's the main student entry, where we're doing some ornamental paving with some colored concrete and some plant material along Aspen Drive. The addition, as Mike mentioned, no classrooms. It's predominantly amenities to the existing school that are needed. Two new music rooms, a band orchestra room with practice rooms and storage area, and a unique kind of combination of fitness orchestra room because they don't use the room at the same time. That's the orange area to the west. Full-size gym with gym offices and toilet rooms that serve that areas for daytime and nighttime activity, and then a couple of art rooms to the north of the courtyard with a couple of support areas in between. Mike also mentioned, if you've ever been by the school and drive by it on Aspen Drive, that entry is not very well-defined. So to both create a more secure entry and better define the entry, we are adding, as Mike called it, an atrium. That's a very nice way of calling it. It's basically a very nice lobby that will control people entering the building. As part of the addition, we are renovating, doing a minor renovation to the library and also to the nurses area and the administration area. This is a larger-scale plan of it and shows how it connects to the existing building. We created a courtyard to allow natural light and ventilation to still serve the existing building and the new building, and also creates an outdoor learning space. And this is the new front entry that also shows the renovated nurses area in the main administration area. The thing that we are trying to achieve, as Mike mentioned, also was to create an aesthetic that is compatible with the existing building. They still make the brick, so we are using the same color brick as what was used on the original building. And the highlights of the existing building are Indian limestone. So with the precast panels that we're using, we are exactly matching the color and texture of the existing building. So that's a very good thing. Also, as Mike mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Committee wished to have, primarily on the east elevation that faces Aspen Drive, more of the thin face brick that we had at the base. So we integrated that into the upper portions, as you can see here, and then added some ornamental ceramic mural tiles on the east elevation at the lower level, so it kind of enlivenes and gives that elevation a little bit more of an inviting aesthetic. This is just another view of that. And then this is the new main entry. Again, picking on the aesthetic of the cafeteria addition that was done about ten years ago with a similar way of treating the glazing with this nice covered entry. And as you can see, it clearly defines the entry, which currently does not occur on the building. And that is it.
Okay. Dave, have you looked at drainage plans and everything?
We have looked at the drainage plan. We've worked through it. Their proposal from Geevalt Hamilton is actually going to improve some of the situation of flooding on Aspen Drive. It will not resolve everything, but they've done a lot of good to make improvements on it. In fact, the engineering, site engineering has been approved, and it's just waiting for the next board meeting to actually issue the permit. One thing that I think is important, and I think they are ready to move forward with, if this board approves of this project, they may ask you for an early start before the next board meeting, and staff would be supportive of that.
Sure.
So Lake Toomachaga won't disappear, but it won't run over Aspen Drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's good. Okay.
And that's, by the way, official now because you can find it on Google Maps.
Oh, really?
Really?
Yes.
That's funny.
All right, very nice. Is this Mike? Well, I know, okay. We gotta-
Yeah, no, no worries.
It says Ann Fairbain.
Couple of questions. With the referendum, this is phase three. So you had Middle North, you had the young learners, and we have this. What is left, left available going forward? And what are the plans after this phase?
I'm Leanne Taylor. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business in the school district. Nice to see all of you again. And nice to see you. We were at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago in a different role. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But yeah, so there, this is another phase. And next summer, we are starting our phase work on a project. We were actually in a meeting today on a project over at Middle School South and some additional space, music areas, STEM spaces. So we'll be coming back for that, and as well as tagged on to that, mostly mechanical work across the district. And then as we look to the last phase and issuing our bonds coming up, we will be working on Elementary North in the last section and probably most likely, as we discussed, a renovation of our libraries. So there's two more phases left in the big projects at Middle South and Elementary North with some smaller projects across the district.
Very good. And I just want to point out, I know when the young learners opened up, that brought enrollment down from this school-
Correct.
-quite a bit, correct?
Yes.
So now we can actually spread out.
That's exactly right.
And the whole purpose of this is, really, right now, with the plans in place, do you see, for future enrollment, what are you planning for future enrollment?
So that is one of the reasons that we are reconfiguring and rediscussing the construction needs in the district. We have to continue conversations with our own board and with Dr. Hanigan on the direction of that. But the actual amount of more footprint to our buildings is being reconsidered rather than renovations and necessarily mechanical upgrades. So we'll continue to discuss those over the next several months. But again, I know for sure we'll be bringing back to another project from Middle South for some space needs, for STEM spaces, things like that, but not a lot of footprint added because of exactly what you mentioned with the enrollment and the opening of Hawthorne School for Young Learners. So we look forward to those future projects. But this Elementary South space and the gym gives us more equal common spaces, gym spaces across the district. We do have PE every day for all of our elementary students, so additional large space like this is needed for our current curriculum. And the music space is another big addition to that, to that space.
The only thing that I would add, my kids are at this school right now-
Yeah.
-in pre-COVID.
Yeah.
I think this is, you know, a great plan, so.
Great.
It looks good.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Justee Cook?
Have we worked out the stuff with regard to the landscape? I mean, the additional requests?
Yes, we are very, we are very willing to work with you on that.
Okay.
I know that, that we're very willing to do that, and I understand that it's a condition of the, of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Does it involve trees that are going to be planted?
I think of a certain, it could. That's exactly, yeah, we just want to work together so that it meets, you know, it meets your specifications and what works for us for maintenance, all of that.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have members of Dave's team out there meeting with your staff to figure out whether there's opportunities and logical locations to put landscaping, and trees are very much in play, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there such trees as a black Egyptian elm?
I've heard a rumor there's one on your street, but it has not been confirmed.
Those, you know, will live, I hope, for quite a while. Because are we done with the, you know, the ash trees? We don't need?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I won't, yeah. Okay, we, oh, I'm sorry. Justee Oppenheim.
No. There we go.
Yeah.
So I'm a little bit confused about the acid-etched precast panels, the concrete. So is the photo that we see now how it's going to be, or is this for the Planning and Zoning?
Yeah, we made the corrections that the zoning and planning committee requested, yes.
Okay, so this is, this is how it's going to be?
That's it.
So, so what, how did it look before? Was it just a flat?
Well, the entire upper area of the gym was all done in the acid-etched, even the east side.
Like the, like the west side?
Yeah.
So this, oh, the whole thing looked like that?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, oh, there we go. Okay. Yeah, you see, where you see brick on the upper portion above the dark line, that was all acid-etched precast. And likewise, on the east side, which they're most concerned about facing Aspen Drive, that upper wall was all acid-etched.
So the feedback was to add brick?
Right.
We had some conversations. We were able to stay within our budget and accomplish that.
Okay. Yeah, it looks good.
Great.
Yeah, what's the enrollment rate now? I mean, at the end?
Of the whole district?
Yeah.
About thirty-eight hundred students.
Okay. And you think it will go back over four thousand at some point?
Um, right now, we're working with District one-twenty-eight and District Seventy on a caserta, another long-term, you know, they give you a ten-year plan on a caserta enrollment projection plan. Next year, we're looking at enrollment maintaining just about the same. No, no deep dive and no large increase.
So when was the last time you were over four thousand students?
Dr. Hanigan, two years ago?
Three years ago.
Three years ago.
Yeah, what was it, four?
It's like forty-two, forty-one.
So it's dropped four or five hundred? Wow. Okay. Well, that's good, I guess, you know? I don't know, you know?
And COVID has really made it difficult for us to do this because there's some families that have, you know, to do those projections, because there's some families that have chosen to keep kindergarteners home. There's a whole bunch of variables. But we are looking at, you know, we look at trends. I've been working with Dan Stanley over at the high school district on that because it's important to him to know how many kids we're giving them as well. I know we have two other high school districts, but the majority of our kids go to one-twenty-eight. So we've been doing a lot of work on that. And yes, we do have less kindergarten students. We're, we'll probably be at about three hundred kindergarten students at Hawthorne School for Young Learners, and then another seventy-five at dual next year, give or take, so about three-seventy-five in our kindergarten enrollment. But, you know, those trends need to be studied, and we need to, again, kind of wait and see if more parents are sending kids to kindergarten or kept them home from last year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's a lot of variables right now.
What's the capacity of the young learners?
Was it five hundred?
No, we're here. He wasn't the architect, and I wasn't here when it got to the-
I want to say it's three hundred fifty.
Yeah, three fifty. So we got room. Right now, we have two-seventy-five. We have a couple extra classrooms.
Now, that's not the new kindergarten.
Yes.
Yes.
But we don't send all the kids in kindergarten to, we have a dual-language program-
Right, okay.
-which I heard your granddaughter wants to be a part of.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not your family. They were lovely. They were lovely. So you're, so, so we have dual-language program, and that is at our school for Townline School in the Hawthorne Dual Language School. And then that houses about three sections, or about seventy-five kids. And like I said, the other, we have about two-seventy-five now. We're projecting a few more based on what I just mentioned. So we're projecting about three hundred kids at the brand-new building.
But the kindergarten this year, in the past, or this past fall, that was a COVID casualty because parents don't have, they don't have to send their kids to kindergarten, and they chose to keep them home.
That's what we're saying.
So there's a, there's a gap there that you don't, that's still an unknown, right?
We can't anticipate it yet. We're, we're still getting kindergarten registrations in, so that's why we're assuming maybe another, another twenty-five. It could be more, it could be less. We're just kind of waiting.
Yeah.
It's hard.
It's difficult. Yeah, it's a difficult time.
No, no, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not a stagnant, you know, situation.
Right. That's exactly right.
So Mike, the staff, the motion should be-
Motion to direct staff, to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving the additions in accordance with the plans that are presented to you tonight and in accordance with the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
So may.
Second. Motion is second. Any further comments or questions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
And just for clarification, I, I saw a lot of heads nodding yes, uh, to the question, can they start before formal approval?
Sure.
Yes.
And so just to clarify, okay, very good. We'll work with them then to get them started.
Yeah.
And I believe there was a waiver of fees on your agenda, too?
Yep, it's coming up now.
Okay, sorry, I'm jumping the gun.
Oh, that's okay.
It's coming up right now.
Do I have to stand here for anything about that?
If you want, you can stand.
I remember the last time I had to stay here, so my superintendent called me back, and I'm supposed to.
I don't know, you want, what?
I know what I'm doing. Yeah.
That's right.
Bring the superintendent. Okay. All right, so now, well, that's, okay, it's approved, uh, in.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, all right, well, next is, uh, the actual waiving of the fees. So, uh, is there a motion to waive the fees?
In the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars and eight cents.
Yeah, okay. Their motion.
There's a motion, yes, a motion to.
Does any of the board members want to pump this lady, you know, for?
No, this, this is something we do for all other taxing bodies and stuff like that, so I'll second Mike's motion.
All right. No further comments or questions, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Shank.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, thank you.
Have a, how, when do you think it'll be open? By the twenty-two?
The, the building will, the bottom mechanical work and some new ceiling tiles, things like that will happen this summer. And then it'll be ready, the additional spaces will be ready for the fall after, correct? So the fall of twenty twenty-two, the new gym and the new music space, art room, that'll be open.
Okay, and, and obviously, the, there's upgrades, all the HVAC because of.
Yes.
You know, the pandemic.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. That's all happening.
Yeah. Using much wood in this, uh, building?
Yeah, because of the price of wood, is that what you're?
Man, I've heard stories that it's like unbelievable.
Yeah, I don't think so. Probably not.
Do you, steel studs?
Well, you're looking at.
It's probably chief. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you adjourn, I just wanted to, uh, I should have probably brought this up at the last, uh, meeting. A hundred percent of the board, is my understanding, has been fully vaccinated, and virtually a hundred percent of our staff has also been virtually vaccinated. So I would, um, I would put to you for the board's input, uh, beginning at the next board meeting, maybe we, we resume board meetings as normal with everyone seated at the dais, uh, in their regular positions. According to CDC rules, if everyone in the room is, is, uh, vaccinated, you no longer need to wear masks. We would still require people that come to the board meeting as presenters or citizens wishing to address the board would still be required to wear masks. Just throw that out there for your consideration. Try to go back to some sort of normalcy.
Yeah.